Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of April 9, 2013. I like to thank the Garden Club for the floral arrangements they always supply for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. Mark Zepferrano, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, the San Bruno Police Department, in coordination with Congresswoman Jackie Spear and other North County, uh, North San Mateo County police agencies, will cosponsor a gun buy pack, buyback on this Saturday, April 23rd, I'm sorry, on Saturday, April 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon at 10:50 Old Mission Road in South San Francisco. Guns will be accepted for buyback from residents of North San Mateo County, and the guns have to be in working order. Also, every year, the Park and Rec Commission presents an award, and this award recognizes a volunteer in the community who supports or is engaged in the services and programs offered through the Community Services Department. In the past, it was focused on parks and rec and seniors, however, with the addition of library services to the department, the nomination process and award also includes library volunteer nominations. The award is not given out every year, just in, in special years when nominations are presented and the, the feeling of the board is that someone really deserves this. This year, Lori Greenberg was given this award, and she's going to receive, receive it next week on the 17th during the Park and Rec Commission meeting. I want to congratulate Lori for all the hard work she does for our community, and I would like to ask anyone who'd like to attend that meeting to, to please do so. So, thank you very much, Lori. Let's see.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ken.
You gave a date of April 23rd as a Saturday. I believe it's the 20th, if it is that Saturday.
That was a little confusing. Is it this Saturday, Chief?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. It is this Saturday, 10:50 Old Mission Road.
Okay, this Saturday, 10:50 Old Mission Road. That's the gun buyback program.
Yes, thank you.
And the time, Chief, is?
From 9:00 AM to noon, 10:50 Old Mission Road in South San Francisco.
Okay, thank you very much.
Through the chair.
Michael?
Can I ask the chief one more question regarding that, the, the buyback? So, um, this particular program will, will give cash to people that want to sell back their, their weapons, but if somebody has a weapon that they want to just turn in to the department and doesn't want anything for it, they can do that by contacting the department?
Correct, thank you very much, council member. That is correct, 24/7. If you have a firearm that you want to turn in, you can contact us at 616-7100, and we will make arrangements to take that firearm for you. Thank you.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Item number four, presentations, uh, we have three this evening, and, uh, the meeting, I hopefully will be fairly short, so I'm going to read them all. The first one is receiver presentation from Deborah Odom, uh, Project Director for Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, RSVP of San Mateo County, and present proclamation on Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. You're on.
Thank you, Mayor Ruane, and members of the San Bruno City Council. Thank you for inviting me here this evening, and to accept this proclamation, and to give you a very brief overview of RSVP of San Mateo and Northern Santa Clara Counties. Just before leaving my office tonight, I checked the Corporation for National and Community Service website, and I want to let you know that Mayor Ruane is listed on their website as being one of 832 mayors across the country who are engaged in the very first ever Mayor's Day of Recognition of National Service. So, congratulations to you, too.
Thank you.
And to spotlight the impact of national service, and to thank those who serve, mayors across the country are participating in this first-ever day, which is today. And on every day in cities across America, national service is tackling tough problems and strengthening communities. Whether supporting food banks, homeless shelters, restoring city parks, building homes, mentoring and helping children, national service members are tech, are working with mayors to tackle tough community problems. As the Federal Agency for Service and Volunteering, the Corporation for National and Community Service annually engages over 4 million citizens at 70,000 sites across the country. They leverage federal and private funds to support organizations that achieve measurable results that are needed, where, where the need is greatest, excuse me. Programs funded and regulated by the Corporation for National Community Service include AmeriCorps, VISTA. AmeriCorps was started during the Clinton administration. VISTA is truly the domestic peace corps, and then, um, the senior corps. Mills Peninsula Health Services is the sponsor of all three programs that make up the senior corps. There's the Foster Grandparent Program, the Senior Companion Program, and both of these programs were started during Sergeant Shriver's War on Poverty back in the 60s. Um, because, and they, it was started, and they say that because someone is low-income does not mean that they ha, they are unable to serve. The stipend that, that those volunteers receive offsets the costs associated with being a volunteer. These, uh, the volunteers in those two programs serve a minimum of 15 hours a week, which is truly a commitment for an older adult. RSVP is the only national service program that does not offer a stipend to volunteers. Members of RSVP can serve anywhere from four to 40 hours a week at many, many different kinds of agencies. Agencies that need and use their time, talents, and skills. Senior Corps started as a demonstration project to show that older adults are not just the recipients of services. They're not sitting on their front porch in the rocking chairs waiting for someone to come and help them. They can be the providers of services. I've heard it said that older adults are the largest and fastest-growing natural resource in this country. Just because someone is older does not indicate that they are less able to serve their communities. It's up to programs like RSVP to capture the experience and knowledge of older adults and put it to good use. That's what we've been demonstrating since 1971. RSVP in San Mateo County is celebrating 39 years, with approximately 800 members serving at about 88 different nonprofit organizations. In San Bruno, RSVP boasts a membership of about 60 people, some who have been members of RSVP for over 25 years. Their lifetime hours of service recorded with RSVP is over 466,000 hours, and with an estimated value of $24.18 an hour, these folks have provided, you can say, $11.2 million worth of service. Some of the agencies where these volunteers serve include the Tax Aid Program with AARP, American Red Cross, right here at the Senior Center, Daily City Peninsula Partnership, High Cap of San Mateo County, Kaiser Permanente, um, Mills Peninsula, San Mateo Medical Center, the Ombudsman Program, Peninsula Family Services, Peninsula Family, uh, excuse me, Peninsula Humane Society in SPCA, Second Harvest Food Bank, um, down at the airport, they serve as travelers' information aides, as well as they serve at the USO, um, and they also serve at the Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired. So, again, I thank you for this acknowledgement and this show of public support, and are there any questions?
Well, don't go away. I have a proclamation for you, and you, you've told us a lot of the things that are already in the proclamation, but I want to read a few words. "Whereas AmeriCorps members and senior corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors; and whereas the Corporation for National Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9, 2013. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim April 9, 2013, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities." I'd like to give this to you now.
Thank you. If someone would like to volunteer, how do they do that? And what is your age? When you say older, what do you mean by older?
55.
55, okay.
This program is funded to serve folks age 55 and older. I just turned 55, so I, I went into 55 kicking and screaming because now I'm old enough for my own program. But you can contact me at Mills Peninsula Health Services, just ask for the RSVP program. We're housed at Senior Focus, which is across the street from the hospital. Senior Focus is a department of Mills Peninsula Health Services. They run an Adult Day Healthcare and Alzheimer's Day Resource Center, and the mission of Senior Focus is to provide these services to help older adults retain their independence and not have to go live in skilled nursing facilities. The Adult Day Healthcare Program provides the medical therapies, speech therapy, occupational, physical therapy, as well as the social therapies, recreation, music, art, and such. And they became the sponsor of the RSVP program 19 years ago because volunteering helps older adults retain their independence. Gives them a reason to get up and get dressed and get out of the house and go do something and engage in the community, being socially connected. All those wonderful things that volunteering can do. So, RSVP fits the mission of Senior Focus. So, it's a perfect blend. They really do value this program, and they sink a lot into it. It's, it's, it's a really good match.
Thank you very much. It's very worthy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Also, as an aside, but related to this, I was contacted by a gentleman at Skyline College, and he said he'd like me to recognize a couple of people that work up there. Joshua Jubelier are, he's a Spark Point Vista member. Skyline is focused on developing the capacity of the center to better meet the needs of clients, and is an invaluable part of their team. And also Sabrina Lawrence Gomez, an AmeriCorps national service member, serves with Climate Corps Bay Area. So, I'd like to recognize those individuals also. So, thank you very much for your presentation, and thanks for all the hard work you do. Item 4B is present a proclamation recognizing the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BSCWA, on its 10th anniversary of service to residents of its member cities. And being that the chair is to my right, I'd like to read this proclamation. "Recognizing the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BSCWA, on its 10th anniversary of service to residents of its member cities. Whereas on May 23rd, 2013, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency will complete its first 10 years since it was formed in 2002 by member agencies following authorization by the state legislature through AB 2058. And whereas its many achievements, BSCWA entered a long-term water supply agreement that specified ways by which water users receive a reliable supply of high-quality water at a fair price. And whereas BSCWA compelled San Francisco to implement a water supply improvement program to rebuild the regional water system protecting 1.7 million residents, 30,000 businesses, and countless community organizations in its service area; and whereas BSCWA closely monitors the $4.6 billion rebuilding program and recommends actions for the San Francis, for San Francisco to keep it on scope, on budget, and on schedule. And whereas BSCWA has saved its water customers $17 million by auditing and enforcing water agreement provisions, and saved $62 million by issuing bonds to prepay prior capital investments; and whereas BSCWA has launched award-winning water conservation programs that save water and money and leverage the staff of member agencies. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency on its 10th anniversary of valuable service to residents of its member agencies." Irene?
Thank you very much. And, do I get to say something?
You get to say something.
Thank you. I, I am the chair. I was elected this last January, so I'm the new chair, and we serve for two years, so I'm very excited about it. We take for granted, I think everybody does, in San Francisco Bay Area, our water supply. You know, we turn on the faucet, and the water comes out, and it's clean, and it's reasonably priced, though most of us don't really like paying for our water bill, but it's there, and it's reliable. And the BSCWA board and its CEO have spent countless hours encouraging and kind of slightly twisting the arm of San Francisco PUC to do the things they're supposed to do, and we will continue to do that. So, that's, that's our mission. If you don't get reliable water, or at a fair price, or a good quality, it's because we're not doing our job, so just wanted to say, no, we'll continue doing our job.
Thank you very much. It's a lot of hard work, I know, and a lot of time. Item 4C, present a proclamation declaring the week of April 21st through April 27, 2013 as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control and Awareness Week in San Bruno. I'd like to read this, and then I'll introduce Ben from the district. "Proclaiming the week of April 21st through 27, 2013, is West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week. Whereas West Nile Virus is a mosquito-borne disease that can result in death or severe debilitation of humans, horses, birds, and wildlife. And whereas in 2012, West Nile Virus resulted in 19 deaths in California, and over 470 individuals in 31 counties tested positive for the virus, of which over 300 developed neuroinvasive disease. And whereas adequately funded mosquito control, disease surveillance, and public awareness programs are the best way to prevent outbreaks of West Nile Virus. And whereas mosquitoes continue to be a source of illness, death, and human suffering, and professional mosquito control based on scientific research has made great advances in reducing mosquitoes and the diseases they transmit. And whereas the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District works with other public agencies to reduce pesticide risk to humans, animals, and the environment while protecting human health. And whereas West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of West Nile Virus and of the importance of integrated management in controlling mosquitoes and other vectors in San Mateo County. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through April 27, 2013, to be designated as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the City of San Bruno." And I'd like to present this to Ben, and also recognize Mr. Riekel, who is our representative on that board.
I'm the technician for San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control, responsible for servicing San Bruno. I do the control and inspections, as well as rodent inspections and consultations. I would like to thank the city for this West Nile, West Nile Virus Awareness Week proclamation. Your city continues to support the mosquito district, and this proclamation is just one way. I and the district would like to thank you for continuing to run our mosquito info slides on San Bruno Cable, the Parks Department staff for reporting dead birds and squirrels, and the eyes of San Bruno residents who have reported dead birds and squirrels. Together, we can continue to work for an almost mosquito-free San Bruno. Any questions should be directed to our district manager, Robert Gay, at 344-8592. Thank you.
Any questions for Ben? Thank you for all the work you do. I know it takes a lot of time, and it's, it's really proving well for San Bruno. Item five, review of the agenda. Uh, no objection, I'd like to move item 11, which is the report of our crime prevention, I'm sorry, the Crime Prevention Committee? Yes. Uh, right up to after item number eight, which is public hearings. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 26, 2013. Any errors, corrections, submissions? Seeing none, to be approved as submitted. Item number seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier in council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no discussion, separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on consent calendar?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I wanted to pull item D.
D as in Delta?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's nothing else to move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
Oh, second.
Motion is second.
Through, through the chair. I apologize. Stop. Mr. Mayor, just too quick. I, I wanted to pull item C also.
C?
Hesitated.
All right. There's a motion in a second to approve items A and B of the consent calendar. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item C, approve an appointment of Vice Mayor Irene O'Connell to a four-year term on the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BSCWA Board of Directors through June 30th, 2017.
Mr. Mayor, I, I realize, happy anniversary, and she received the proclamation on our behalf, uh, but I have to say that Vice Mayor has been on BSCWA for the entire 10 years, and obviously, uh, we must, we must reappoint her for another four years. But I have to say that, uh, I don't know, I don't know anyone better to, to, to take care of our infrastructure and to report to us on the quality of our water and our water systems. And I thank her on behalf of this council for all, you know, for those 10 years and beyond that service, and wish her well in the next, remaining, the next four years.
Great.
With that, I'd like to approve the item.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item C. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the U.S. Soccer Foundation, accepting a $50,000 grant for Lyons Field Synthetic Turf Project. Michael?
Okay. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we, we have received this very generous, uh, grant from the U.S. Soccer Foundation, and definitely grateful for that. And this, uh, you know, took a while and a lot of work, uh, from our staff to get this approved, and, uh, did come in a little bit after we had already made the decision to move forward, and so now we have this opportunity to replenish the funds that were used for the field. And, um, I had a suggestion that we may want to, rather than replenish the park-and-loo funds, create a separate, uh, sort of reserve fund, or use an existing reserve fund, um, for this particular grant, so that we have more flexibility in either addressing the needs of Lyons Field or some other, um, park-and-rec facilities that may need attention, but may not fall within the parameters of the park-and-loo fund.
That's a good suggestion. I think, Irene, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I, while, I, I think it's a great suggestion, is there restrictions on the grant itself, though? Do we know? No? Great.
I don't know that there are restrictions on the grant, per se, but I can check on that to see if that's something that we can do. Um, I do know that one of the suggestions when we did build the field was to start a reserve fund, so that rentals that came out of the field being redone went indirectly into that reserve fund. So, we have started that fund, so there is one existing. We could possibly just put this directly into there. Um, I can contact them and find out if that, if that would work, and if there's any, I, I don't see there being a reason that we couldn't, because it's, they're giving us the funding for what we need to use it for, for the field.
Great. Second.
Through the chair.
All right, Riekel?
My memory is, as Ms. Brewer said, was because I thought the council said, okay, we have this field, now we want to make sure it's maintained and kept up, and how do we replenish that? How do we pay for it? It's great to get things, but we need to pay for them as we go, to make sure there's always a source. And I think that that was one thing. Another thing is I had asked the city attorney, uh, because I read through the document, I got a little concerned, because it seemed like there was a lot of reporting and stipulations, and, uh, one day a year, and place this here, and send pictures. So, I got a little concerned, but I was assured that Danielle and, I guess, former director had already kind of looked into that, and had already found ways to use the resources that we already have put forward, have done, so that minimizes any of the staff requirements. So, I appreciate that that was looked into.
Anything else? I think the resolution is, this evening is to authorize the manager to accept the $50,000, but I think staff has heard that we want a little more research into where these funds may be able to go in, in the near future.
Okay.
Okay.
Connie, did you?
Connie?
I, I just wanted to suggest that there's, we, we can certainly bring back an, an actual action item that accomplishes what I believe the council member and the council as a whole have discussed here, which would, um, essentially, it'd be true to the requirements of the grant, which is that that particular money be used for the field, and that we can replenish the park-and-loo fee fund that was used instead, and free up that equivalent amount of money, um, in the manner that Councilmember Salazar has suggested. So, it's just a slightly different workaround to get you to the same place, and not, um, create any potential confusion about the city's deployment of those funds that were received from the soccer organization. So, I think, yeah, we understand clearly what you're after, and, and we, we can accomplish that easily.
All right. So, I, should we move forward with this action to approve, uh, accepting the grant?
I would go ahead and approve this action, and, um, and the minutes can reflect that staff is clear with your expectation that they'll, uh, will bring back a subsequent item to confirm the movement of the monies to accomplish your objective.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, then I'll introduce that, uh, item for a vote.
Second.
Motion, second, on item D. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item eight, public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. Hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce ordinance amending the municipal code to establish police permit system for new firearm dealers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. This is a public hearing for introduction of an ordinance that's going to amend the municipal code to establish a police permit system for new firearms dealers. The council has now twice discussed this issue, once generally on the 26th of February, and then much more specifically, a month later, on March 26th, where we presented you with a proposed ordinance that would be amending and inserted into our municipal code. After discussion at that time, the council directed staff to bring back an ordinance for introduction to implement that permit system that would apply to new firearms dealers in the city. It's important to note that the police chief did meet with our existing firearms dealers. They did not express any comments or concerns. They were provided with a copy of the staff report, and it's also important to note that they are, in fact, complying with many of the conditions that are outlined here in the report already, and those conditions being requested by the police chief and the planning department, so that their operations are, in essence, consistent with the operation of this particular ordinance if it's introduced and then adopted. We did make a few minor changes to the ordinance as a result of some further staff review, and I just wanted to point those out for the benefit of the council and the public. In section 6.08.070H1, we made it clear that that section is going to apply after the zoning code amendments. And you'll recall that there was direction to locate new firearms dealers in the M1 industrial zone, and we're making it clear that this municipal code amendment that relates to the location of new firearms dealers would go into effect only after the zoning code is amended. And you've directed that those amendments be processed, in essence, by the end of, of this year, along with all of the other zoning code changes. The second minor change we made is, you'll note that there's a 250-foot lim, uh, distance limitation between new firearms dealers and residential districts. We made it clear that's also from residential uses. There are some residential uses already in the M1 district, and we wanted to make sure that those existing residences were protected. The third change is we added a section under, a section H there, uh, which allows the police chief to establish hours of operation for the firearm dealers. We also added a, a brief reference to the purpose of the municipal code amendment, which is to protect the establishment itself, the patrons, and the public. That's the reason why we're, we're bringing this forward. And then finally, at the suggestion of the Planning and Police Department, we added a, a small wording change in the section where it talks about the weapons have to be kept in a safe, uh, place. We also added, or a safe room, if there are so many weapons that they can't all fit in, in a safe. So, we just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Other than those changes, the ordinance that's in your packet is the same as what was presented to you at the March 26th meeting. I don't have any other comments in my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if not, I'd recommend that you open the public hearing, take any public comment, close the hearing, deliberate, and then introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
Any questions of, of Mark or staff at this time?
Yes.
Ken?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm a little concerned about the investigation portion. As much as it seems vague or general, so, I'm not really clear as to, uh, is it an application process, or is there truly an investigation into, or a background check, an in-depth background check on this, on this property owner?
Both. There, there is an application, and that form, uh, which is going to be created, and will be created- created by the police department, consistent with the federal law, will require the proposed dealer to, to fill it out and then there will be a background check by the police department.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. This time we'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to speak on this item? Just tell us your name and your street, please.
Chuck Zelnick-Merced. Just a question on the, the dealers. Would they be able to sell out of their residence, like I think it's been in the past? Or are these people that are going to own storefront businesses or wherever they put them? My concern is that you might end up with somebody that's able to sell firearms of whatever quantity in a residential area or near a school or something like that. That just opens it up if somebody gets robbed, then all of a sudden they're back on the streets real quick. So I just wasn't sure when I heard the reporting, who's the dealer? Could it be an individual at home doing this or is it somebody that has to be out in the commercial area of our zoning?
All right. We've put some pretty specific restrictions regarding residential, but I'll let Mark expand on that.
Right. That's correct. Of course, a dealer can, can live anywhere. What they can't do is sell firearms out of their residence because that would be in either a residential district or residential use. And what this ordinance and the upcoming zoning ordinance amendment would say is that if you're selling firearms as a dealer, and that's specifically defined in the ordinance, you have to do it in the authorized zone, which would be in the M1 industrial zone. So it could not be done out of one's house.
Okay. Any other members of the public like to address this, on this item? If I close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from discussing this with us any, any longer? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion, second, on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to close the public hearing. And any action or discussion by the council?
Through the chair, I have one question on, on what the city attorney just said. So just to be extra, extra clear on this, if someone were, somebody could have a federal firearms seller's license, or I forget what the exact term is, but somebody could be licensed to sell firearms and do their business, say, over the internet or just not have a storefront? Is that somehow regulated or is that not even an option? Can somebody not have that sort of business?
Well, I'll, I'll let the police chief answer the, the last part of that question. All I can say about this particular ordinance is that a firearms dealer is defined as someone who is in the business of selling, transferring, leasing, or offering for sale any firearm. So state law requires a federal firearms license and state law refers back to a local city that may enact a permit process. So state law and our ordinance is before you tonight, complement one another, and no, that could not be done. No firearms could be sold out of the residence.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Action by the council?
I have, um...
Ken?
On, on the internet and these, these firearms, what are, what do you call those? Where they have the fairs where they sell them and...
Gun shows.
Gun shows, I'm sorry. That's it. Can we, can we restrict that particular business owner from any, any form of that participation? Can we restrict them from, from dealing online or like mail order out of that particular business? Because I know there's, there seems to be some concerns about mainly internet sales. And then there's the, you know, the entire, you know, the background check issues, you know, as far as going to the gun shows.
Right. I understand from following some of the efforts in federal legislation, there is a, a big concern about ways that individuals can circumvent both state and local laws regarding firearm sales and purchases and doing so online and doing so at gun shows is, is one of the ways that, that people can do that. I'm not aware of any local regulation of online sales. There was an attempt in, in Oakland, an unsuccessful attempt, as it turns out, to regulate the presence of gun shows in that particular jurisdiction. And that ended up in a court case, in a settlement, which in the end didn't, didn't really accomplish very much. So aside from that, there's not a lot of precedent for cities in and of themselves regulating the activities of their residents online. And I think that would be more a subject for federal regulation. I know they are looking at that with respect to the background checks.
Okay. Anything else? Action by the council?
I'll introduce, oops.
Waive the first reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to waive the first reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now introduce the resolution.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Now we're going to move right to item 11, which is a report of our Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. I believe Peter Carey is going to give that for us.
The Citizens Crime Prevention Committee this year, 2013 report is as fol, is as follows. Robert Reichel is the chair. I, Peter Carey, co-chair. Frank Jering is a member. Brandon Lau and Matthew Sum. At this point, we have two vacancies that we're looking to fill. Officer Gerald McCoy is the police department public liaison and Councilmember Rico Medina is the liaison with the council. Our activities and accomplishments are as follows. Assist neighborhood watch groups, expand neighborhood watch groups, disseminate crime prevention information tips, bilingual crime prevention tips, which are on San Bruno Cable Channel One, drunk driving prevention, Halloween safety tips, July 4th safety tips, back-to-school safety ticks, tips, and others. Other act, activities and accomplishments are safety and crime prevention literature, handouts, neighborhood watch, DNA collection, suspicious individual form, child safety information, and more to come. We're vigorously looking to get more information out there for handouts for the public. We also have National Night Out once a year, proclamation for this annual event, attending neighborhood gatherings, Police Recognition Day at Tanfran Mall, assist with participant setup, staffed at the information booth, and provide crime prevention literature. Our goals for 2013, 2014 are to participate in community events with the police department, promote and support Police Recognition Day, which is May 11th, 2013, at Tanfran, Disaster Preparatus Day at the San Mateo County Fairgrounds in June, and provide a crime prevention information booth at the annual Posey Parade. Ongoing programs are to continue to expand Neighborhood Watch, participate in National Night Out, assist the police department in obtaining updated business emergency contact information, develop and disseminate information as far as brochures, continue monthly cable TV crime tips, update the city's crime prevention website. We meet the second Thursday of every month at seven o'clock in City Hall, room 113. It's open to the public. We invite anybody and everybody to come. We're looking forward in expanding the Neighborhood Watch and event plannings. And I thank you, the council, Chief Tufford and Officer McCoy.
Any questions for Peter? Irene?
Could you expand a little bit about what is a Neighborhood Watch and why people should be involved in it and how do they become involved in it?
Well, as we know, there's certainly been a rash of burglaries throughout the Bay Area, the peninsula. And a Neighborhood Watch is a way to get together with your neighbors and so on, sign up, you can sign up and register, and with certain criteria, but basically looking out for each other. And to be very honest, the last few burglary people that have been busted in various cities have been caught basically by neighbors seeing something suspicious and reporting it.
So how does somebody start that? How do they get involved here in San Bruno? Do they call you crime prevention? What do they do?
Call the police department on 616-7100 and ask for information to be sent out and it will get to the committee and we will send them out the brochure and try to get enough of their neighbors together to have a meeting with the police department and make a commitment to basically be active eyes and ears.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Through the chair.
Rico?
Just to highlight on that, too, I know I attended the last National Night Out at Grundy Park and it was interesting because you had a neighborhood that went out there, had a barbecue, a little potluck. And in essence, oddly enough, you had two folks that lived across the street for several years who had just met each other that night. So it is a matter of reaching out within the community, within your neighborhood, to make sure it's safe. You also can transition it into, if there were an emergency or disaster, to make sure that you take care of each other, those that may need some assistance during a tragedy or disaster, which we know, we have experienced in this town. So we know how important it is to reach out, to know your neighbors, and to be a part of a program. And so when I was there, I was impressed about how the neighborhood came together and really enjoyed their time and getting to know each other, some for the very first time.
Yeah. Very good.
Good. Well, as I say to all the commissions, boards, and committees, you're the ones that are the lifeblood of this city. People don't realize how many hours, thousands of hours, everybody puts in volunteers for this city. So we really appreciate your efforts. Also, as you mentioned in the beginning, we have two vacancies on your, on your committee. It's really important that we get these filled. So anybody who's here or anybody interested that's listening, please apply to the city clerk's office. We'll interview and we'd like to get this back up to the seven members that it needs to be. So once again, thank you very much.
Great. Very good. Thank you.
Item number nine is public comment on items that are not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Mr. Rico?
I'm wearing a couple hats tonight. Councilmember Ibera and I and about a dozen are working to make sure that Relay for Life San Bruno, April 27, 28, 24 hours event, where we'd like people not to constantly walk, but to have people walking around the Cappuccino High School track. There's a few flyers in the back. We're still seeking support. Even if you don't sign up, come out, sign up is to get in just so we know that you're there and walk a lap, walk two laps. There will be activities all the, all the time. If you can't go that far, we're not going to even ask you to donate money, but we would love to. But you can donate money if you are a Pasta Pomodora patron, Monday, the, April 15th, Tuesday, and Wednesday, all day, they will be giving back a donation to American Cancer Society for all meals served. You do need one of these flyers. There's a few on the counter in the back. And if you, if they're all gone, you can go to relayforlife.org/SanBruno, California, San Bruno, CA, all run together. And there is a link on the webpage so that you can download the flyer, share it with your friends, go Monday, go Tuesday, go Wednesday, or any of them. If you do go, please thank Pasta Pomodora for supporting the, this worthwhile activity. This is the fourth year and we hope to keep it in San Bruno.
Thank you, Robert.
Questions, direct them to Ken Ibera. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council on a public comment? All right. We'll get right into conduct of business. 10A, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Hydro Science Engineers, Inc., for the design of the Olympic Pump Station Rehabilitation Enforcement Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $261,069.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, good evening. The Olympic Pump Station, as part of our sewer discharge system, serves close to 500 residents. The station itself was, was built in '61 and is very antiquated, needs to be replaced, was recommended in our 2000 master plan to replace the pump station and also is recommended in our new, in, in our draft sewer master plan also. Three years ago, when SCADA system was developed for the sewer system, wasn't even, the Olympic Pump Station wasn't connected to the SCADA system due to high investment, invested, investment needed to upgrade the system to be able to be connected with the SCADA system. Reason why the station itself required a, right now, a ongoing high labor investment from the pump mechanics. They have to check the pump on daily basis to make sure that the pump is functioning properly due to history of high SSOs as dislocation. When raining, then the pump station, the pump mechanic even during the night will go out to see physically if the pump station's still in working condition. Reason why, back in January, staff came and informed you and on two possible alternative to address the issue with the pump station. One of the alternative was to abandon the, the pump station and the main and to discharge this area of the sewer through Westboro System to the Daily City Treatment Plant. The second alternative was to replace the pump station and the main. At that time, you concurred with staff recommendation to replace the pump station and the main. Subsequently, staff sent out a RFP requesting proposal for, from the consultant community for the design services to replace the pump station. The city received seven proposals. Three of those firm were interviewed by a panel. The panel selected Hydro Science Engineering Incorporated as the most qualifying to provide the services for us. The main reason for that specific selection was that this firm had the best project approach, emphasizing the sensitivity of the design and replacing this pump station in a neighborhood environment. And they thought through what kind of mitigation, what they need to include in the design to develop a context-sensitive design for this pump station in that neighborhood. Also, they really thought through how the transition of the development of, of the new pump station would go in and would be connected then to the whole system, minimizing in the same time any risk, minimizing the risk during those operation. If the council will support and will authorize the city manager to execute the contract, then this project and the pump station will be under construction probably next year in 2014 during the construction, construction season. In our CIP project, the estimated total cost for this project is, was 3.1 million. And at this time, based on the available information, I don't see any reason why this project could not be in, in that estimated budget. I have here Bing Wong, who knows much more about this project than I do. He is the project manager. And also, I have here Dennis Bosch, who is the manager for the system. And certainly, all three of us are here to answer any question that you might have.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Ken?
Speaking of budget, I was leaning over to my colleague here. I do recall the, the discussion in January about the two projects, the bypass that would go to Westboro and then Daily City, and then this project. Those figures were 11 and 12 million dollars, though. I mean, what am I missing here that this project is budgeted more like $3 million? And in January, we selected a, the option to rehabilitate at a total of about 11 million.
At that time... At that time, was compared the two alternative based on life cycle cost, not just the replacement cost of the station.
That's right. No, that's right, yeah. Okay, so actual construction, design and construction, is $3 million?
$3.1 estimated last year, and still no other information available for us at this time to say. What is information available that our estimate for the design was $500?
Until it designed.
And this was negotiated to $261, that our probably say savings already, but is not certain until the design release is done, it's hard to say that any saving. But for certain, the design itself was estimated to $500, and the negotiated number is $261.
Any questions of staff?
Just you alluded to, there's a panel. Who serves and who consisted of the panel?
Each project, depending on the type of the project, has a different internal panel who is interviewing those firm. In this case, the project manager, Wing Wong, was part of the panel. The acting city engineer at that time, Ray Razavi, was part of the selection panel. Dennis Bosch, and also the two pump mechanics, who had the most knowledge about this, the pump station, those five were part of the interviewing panel of those five firms.
And everybody on this panel then concurs with this recommendation that is being presented to us tonight?
Everybody without any exception supported this recommendation tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions? Action by the Council?
Okay, I'll introduce the resolution. Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a construction contract with Bay City's Pyrotecder, Inc., for the Cable and Technology Fire Suppression System project in the amount of $69,545, approving a construction contingency of $10,430, and amending the budgeted appropriation of funding for the project.
The members of the Council. Currently, the city buildings and facilities have fire sprinkler systems installed. However, it's not active at the city's network and communication equipment systems area, including those at City Hall, data center, and cable, and the head end. An undetected, an undetected fire could destroy the city's critical equipment, data, and phone systems. If a typical, a sprinkler system, when activated, also can destroy, the water can destroy the sensitive equipment. So to address this issue, we need to have a fire protection system without damaging our sensitive equipment when it's activated. The proposed fire suppression system consists of installing an aerosol fire retardant at these locations to protect the city's sensitive equipments. This aerosol system is a stainless steel canister, contains ultrafine particles that provides a large surface area interaction with the fire. In the fire zone, these particles bind with the fire to rapidly slow and extinguish the fire. Staff prepared contract documents and specification for this system. The project was advertised, and bids were received. Bay City Pyrotecder was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The funding necessary for this project is in our CIP budget, unfunded from Technology, Cable, and A-Bag Risk Management Funds. Since the cost to install the fire suppression system at the cable facility is greater than the share of the overall budget than originally anticipated, we are asking, we're proposing participation ratio to be adjusted as presented in the staff report. It is anticipated that this project will be complete this summer. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Staff? Action by the Council?
Go ahead and introduce the resolution authorizing the City Manager. Move forward.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10C, review, report, and authorize process for the disposition and development of vacant lots within the Crestmore neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, over the last several months, staff along with residents have been addressing the various rebuilding, restoration issues in the Crestmore neighborhood following the devastating PG&E gas line explosion and fire that occurred in our community on September 9th, 2010. As the Council is well aware, at that time, there were a total of 38 homes that were totally destroyed, or that were determined to be a total loss, and there are now, or there have been rather, in the immediate aftermath of the fire, 38 vacant lots in the neighborhood. We've been very pleased to see the progress in recovery, rebirth, and rebuilding of the neighborhood, and a number of those lots have progressed through their owners and with the direct hands-on support and assistance by city staff, have progressed to the point of occupancy and/or substantial construction. And we now are at a point where property owners have had a sufficient opportunity of time to evaluate what they want to do, and for at least the vast majority of these lots, individuals have either returned and rebuilt, are planning to return and are planning to rebuild, or they have decided not to return and not to rebuild in the neighborhood. As you are also aware, PG&E had, at an early stage following the explosion, embarked on a program to assist residents of the neighborhood who were confronted with a decision about whether to return and rebuild, by offering to purchase any properties whose owners decided not to return. Over the course of first period of time, PG&E purchased a total of five lots, and as of a year ago, at the time that the city entered into a restitution settlement agreement with PG&E, those five lots were transferred to the city as part of that settlement agreement that the City Council is well familiar with. Over the past year, PG&E has acquired an additional seven lots. That brings to a total of 12 lots, which have been purchased and for which there are no plans for the property owners to return and rebuild themselves. There's a table in the staff report that you have, and the map that's projected on the wall behind me, gives a visual overview of the status of each of the 38 lots, whether it is either in progress or has been redeveloped by its owner, whether it has transitioned to, via sale, to PG&E. And there are just a very small number of lots whose status has yet not, has as of yet not been determined, and those properties are listed as well on the map and in the staff report. At this time, there are only two lots of the original 38 where the property owners have not yet decided what their ultimate future plans are. So we think it's an appropriate time to be discussing and determining how the city and PG&E should proceed to resolve the future of those lots that have gone into, that went into PG&E's ownership. The other, and probably the more pressing issue, is that we're now two and a half years approximately from the time of the explosion and the fire. And during that time, while there has been a great deal of progress, both to, by individual property owners in terms of rebuilding their homes, reestablishing, restoring their lives, there's been a great deal of ongoing construction activity in the neighborhood, both on the private development side, as I mentioned, as well as on the, what would I call, the public development side, with our various projects to rebuild, repair, and improve the infrastructure throughout the entire Crestmore neighborhood that was impacted by the incident. Residents in the neighborhood are rightfully, and somewhat vigorously, expressing their concern about the length of time that they have already had to endure the impacts of ongoing construction activity, and frankly, they've been expressing their concerns about how much longer this is likely to go on. At the current time, we estimate approximately another 18 months' worth of public construction to fully rebuild, restore, and improve the infrastructure throughout, as I indicated, the entire neighborhood. And it is likely, if we start right now, that a similar amount of time will be necessary for private development of the lots that have remained vacant and for which there are no current plans by the property owners for their redevelopment. At the January 23rd Town Hall meeting with the Crestmore neighborhood, this issue or question of what are you planning to do about these vacant lots, and when will they be developed, and we want to see these lots developed with new homes so that we do not need to continue to be impacted both by ongoing forever construction, as well as the visual reminder of the fact that devastation occurred in the neighborhood and that homes at once stood are no longer there. The neighborhood in short is expressing a very strong concern that homes be developed on the lots, and that that be done as quickly as possible for a variety of different reasons. The, at that time of the January 23rd meeting, in answer to the questions that were raised on this topic, staff warranted to the neighborhood that this issue would be back in front of the City Council for a final determination within approximately 60 days, and that's the reason for this, for the timing of the report to you tonight, and for our request that you consider a specific strategy to address the disposition and the development of those lots. The, as indicated in the table that you have in front of you, and I indicated before that there are a total of seven lots that are currently owned by PG&E. There are a total of five lots that are currently owned by the city, and of those, staff is recommending and identifying two lots that we believe may have some future potential value for either expansion of the existing park area footprint or other public use. Staff is recommending that the remainder of those lots, and those lots currently owned by PG&E, that we move forward in a timely manner and as quickly as possible with a process to develop and put those properties back into private ownership. Staff considered a variety of different alternatives for accomplishing that, including kind of on the, on the, on a, one end of the scale, putting them out to individual sale. And let me back up and mention that we have, throughout this process, maintained coordination and communication with PG&E, and it has been consistently PG&E's stated preference and interest to be in coordination with the city, and we have recently suggested to PG&E that a collaborative process led by the city, such that all of this could be done at once, whatever the, whatever the strategy is, would be a good idea. We've received initial verbal confirmation through PG&E that that is a desirable approach from their perspective as well. PG&E is understandably very sensitive and interested in avoiding any appearance that PG&E is doing something within the neighborhood and/or that PG&E is profiting from their acquisition of the lots that they took ownership of in an attempt to assist property owners who needed alternatives for disposition of their properties. Staff, as I said, has evaluated a variety of options. Among those would be the potential of putting them out to individual sale so that individual private parties could purchase and then develop them. Ranging, other alternative would be that the city could actually act as the landowner, the developer. We could acquire by purchase the properties from PG&E, and/or PG&E could act as a developer and develop the properties and then put them out to sale. And we have settled, after a fairly extensive evaluation of different ways of approaching this issue and different alternatives, staff is recommending to you tonight that we pursue a strategy, and again, in coordination with PG&E, whereby the city would take the lead and would manage and control a process to select via a Request for Proposals, or RFP process, a qualified and capable developer, who would then take ownership, would purchase the properties, and would then proceed with their development in a coordinated manner. And it's sort of like a production build or a mini subdivision whereby the development would occur as near as possible all at one time in order to minimize the ongoing and over time impact to the neighborhood that would otherwise occur if the lots were put out for individual development, or they were developed somehow individually, either by PG&E or by us. While we can't suggest to you or to the neighborhood that impact can be eliminated, and certainly a development of this size and scope, along with the ongoing construction activity to rebuild the infrastructure throughout the neighborhood, is going to continue to create a probably substantial impact on residents within the neighborhood. We hope to minimize the timeline over which that occurs, and to manage that in the best way possible by, with the approach that we're recommending to you tonight, whereby we would be dealing with one, not many developers, and that we would specify in a Request for Proposals process, and by our management and coordination with the developer going forward, the details of how that development will occur. And again, as I mentioned, the lots would be developed at one time by one developer in order to minimize, to the maximum extent possible, the timeline over which that development is occurring. Again, staff has had preliminary conversations with PG&E. PG&E has expressed themselves agreeable to an approach whereby we would enter into an agreement that would specify the city's control and leadership of the process on behalf of the lots, both those owned by PG&E as well as those owned by the city. And we believe that this is a workable scenario and one which best meets both the city's, PG&E's, as well as, most importantly, the neighborhood's interests. We're recommending to you tonight that you direct staff to proceed to enter into the agreement I mentioned with PG&E, and to move forward expediently with the development of a Request for Proposals and the solicitation of developer interest, the identification of a selection process, and then that we would work with you further after we've put together a Request for Proposals and a selection process to move forward with a selection of a developer and a ultimate sale of the properties to that selected developer. Be happy to answer any questions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think it's important that we get this done as a package and we get this done sooner than later with the least impact to the neighborhood because they've been through an awful lot. We have a lot more to go, so just my two cents. Tell us your name and your street, please.
Chuck Zelnick Merced. I would like to give you three options that I think you should consider. One is I think you should table this item until your next scheduled meeting. I was only able to obtain the background documentation from the city clerk, city manager's office at two o'clock this afternoon, which, if my understanding is correct, really nobody in the public's had a chance to review this or even be having an opportunity to come forth. Being that this item has, you know, been an ongoing issue, this is really the first time, as the city manager has told me about Town Hall meetings, that this council has formally, in a council meeting, addressed this issue prior to going into closed session negotiating with the PG&E. So I would first ask that you table this for two weeks so that people in the public have a chance to read this and see if it is. I've talked to a few people in the area who have no clue of what this was all about and how this was coming down. Now, maybe some people do, some people don't. That's my first request. The second request I have is that a little over six months ago, I entered into conversations with two people, people at PG&E and their real estate department. Subsequently, I was forwarded to Mike Olson of Brook Street in regards to the properties that PG&E had owned. At that time, I was told by Mike that, you know, the city under their agreement had first right of refusal and that there were people interested in purchasing those lots directly from PG&E. I have an offer still sitting with PG&E, and PG&E has not been able to enter into the next stages of dialogue due to the fact that the city of San Bruno has first right of refusal on all those parcels. In talking with the city manager a couple of months back, she explained to me that she has known of other people that had an interest in buying those lots and having them developed in this, in this, in the, in the purpose of getting these lots built and getting this, you know, development back where it is. You know, a lot of care was given from the residents that I knew personally that rebuilt their homes. They did a lot of thinking, a lot with their architects, and there's some beautiful homes that they're being rebuilt there all the time. A developer just wants one thing, the bottom line payoff. And you're going to just take cookie cutter homes, change the faces a little bit, but they're going to be the same thing, and it's not going to have the care and personality of people that have been there or people within this town that have lived here. So I think it's really not, the delays have been that PG&E doesn't want to step on the city's toes, generally speaking, as it was explained to me, and that these offers, you know, would like to be handled, but they haven't been able to do it because of the clause of first right of refusal. I'm a little confused, if we're trying to hurry up the process, why are we, you know, slowing them down on selling? I think even if you allow PG&E to sell them, you can also stipulate that that proceeds, or let's call it profit that they're making, be put back into the city in another means that is acceptable to the council and to the residents. So it's not like they're going to profiteer off us. You know, they're going to make a profit, they should be able to return it back. If not, it should go into helping the ratepayers pay the exorbitant amount of costs that we're having to pay now for their negligence.
Not going to happen.
The, what I'm asking then is simply that if you choose to go the path that you're going, that you release the property at sixteen fifty-five Clermont so that PG&E and I can finish, and if we can't come up to an agreement on a price and terms, then we will, you know, it'll revert back to you. Our terms with PG&E is we've written a proposal and our attorney has forwarded to them is straightforward. It's an offer price, thirty day close, it's an all cash deal. So if we would have been able to do this six months ago, we'd be breaking ground on a new home on that lot. So I'm not sure where the confusion is of, I know there's other people that have asked me how I got my information, and they would like to also pursue building in this community, but the whole thing came back to is, Michael Olson explained to me, first right of refusal stopped the door on anybody trying to get through. At least I was able to get into PG&E, talk to the people and say, this offer's sitting there. I'd like to finish negotiating. If they want more than I can afford, I'll walk away in two weeks, but we're ready to go, and we've been ready to go. You know, city manager Jackson explained to me that, you know, this would take several months to get to you guys. You talk about the construction delays, you're talking about putting bump out mediums, or I think it's called traffic calming or something out there. The residents I talked to want no part of it. So I don't know what this all lingering is. What I'd like to do is build a home for my children who are participating in the finances of this, would like to be stay in San Bruno where they were born and raised, and my grandson would love to live close by to me. I'm sure I could persuade him to do that. But worse comes to worse, I'd like you to choose, you know, the option that you have on the back, which is let PG&E sell the land, give them a deadline to sell them by, and there's nothing better than private enterprise pushing to get a project built. The developer you risk with, hey, are they going to look at the across from Tan, Lenardi's up there? Half that tract wasn't built because of financial problems. The ones across the street and the old gas stations weren't built. I'm ready to build, and I'm sure there's other people out there that are ready to build if they know that PG&E hands aren't tied any longer. So I'd really ask you to consider it. If you don't consider it from the public viewpoint, let's call it, I'd like you to consider it that give me two weeks to finish with PG&E. If I can't close a deal in two weeks, it'll be back in your hands and I'll say, well, I gave it the old try and move on down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from the council? City manager?
Could I just make one clarifying comment? I think my comments were clear that PG&E has been very interested in working collaboratively with the city. The specifics of the agreement that the city and PG&E entered into that is they established the community restitution does not require first right of refusal per se. It is, the wording in that agreement calls for PG&E to coordinate and to collaborate with the city relative to any additional lots that they would acquire. And I think it's fair to say that they have done that and that that is the extent of our relationship.
Questions or comments? I don't want to be in a position of speaking for PG&E, but I know that they don't want to get involved in the land business at all. They are very sensitive to being in the neighborhood at all, and they just want to get this behind them. And we looked at a number of scenarios. I don't know, Mr. Zelnick and maybe some other people have some offers out there, I don't know. But a lot of the PG&E issues were just settled with a lot of these residents having to do with lots and settlements. A lot of this was not, the city was not privy to at all. So we're not aware of any of the intricacies of what might have happened with individuals or other entities at all. So, you know, we've talked about this on and off with the neighbors over the last number of months, and I understand where some individuals might want to purchase a lot and build. There's no guarantee that those individual, individuals will in fact build in a timely manner. That really concerns me because this neighborhood has been through an awful lot and still has some more to go. So I think some type of a package deal and collaboration with PG&E is probably the best way to go. And we still have control over design. We still have control over all of the different things that go into building a home, just like any other place in San Bruno. So that's my two cents there.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. As a designer, I'm a little concerned with another ten, ten different looking houses up there. Yes, beauty is an eye of the beholder, but there's a lot of different designs up there. And thirty-eight different designs is, to me, is not going to look good. And I think, you know, and whether you change facades and change materials, there are some very nice developments and especially even in this town with Summer Hill and such, that good examples of how a developer can, can mix, mix and be, and have some continuity in a neighborhood. That was what made this neighborhood so attractive, many of our neighborhoods so attractive over the course of the years, is that, you know, they are very similar, you know? And then each, each owner added their own touch to it. But to, to go from, you know, from the dirt up with something totally different is not, it's not appealing to me, really. And so I feel that with another ten homes that we have control over and have good design guidelines, I believe that an RFP process is the best way to go.
Anyone else? Irene?
I would just like to clarify that the neighborhood people have been informed of all the negotiations that have been going on. They know that we've been talking about the different options that we've talked about with the housing up there. It's like anything else, you can get ten people in a room and you get ten different opinions about things. So our job up here is to find the best way that we can to help the process along, to minimize the impacts of the neighborhoods, to get the houses built as quickly and as well as possible. I realize that individuals would like to buy, to purchase separate lots, as my understanding is in some places, there's more than one individual who would like the same lot. And, I mean, part of our problem is, well, what, how do you deal with that? What's fair and all those other questions? So all along, we've been dealing with how to, how to make it work for everyone. And so I think our emphasis is to get it done as quickly as possible with a good quality result and have the, while it won't be pleasant for probably eighteen months, is that a fair estimate? After that, it's all done, then there won't be anything after that. So I agree with the process that we're, the RFP process that we're contemplating. In that process, we can specify how long, what kinds, square footed, we can specify a great deal of details. Am I correct?
Yes, absolutely. And as, as I was discussing here a moment ago with my colleague, the city can up to and including specifying a tract style, you know, all the houses look same or very, very similar, up to a program whereby the, the houses would have, let's say, semi-custom finishes, or they might be semi-custom built homes, to blend and to bring about a sort of a more coordinated appearance of, I don't have the right design tech, tech words.
Don't ask me for buzzwords.
But to make sure that the neighborhood, when it's finished, given that this is a pretty substantial number of additional homes, that the aesthetic of the overall neighborhood is one that fits together, works together, and is consistent with what both the neighborhood as well as the community wants to see. I think the council members' comments are very well taken, and there has been some amount of discussion among the neighborhood as well, and there's lots of, everybody has an opinion. So there are lots of different opinions among residents in the neighborhood, like elsewhere, that, you know, a lot of people just really want to see it back the way it was. And we're, we're already quite a ways from that, so there's, there's an interest, I think, in, in blending the old and the new and putting together something that people will be happy with long into the future.
Anything else? Michael?
Well, I, I just wanted to say that it would have been nice probably to have this report available sooner than this afternoon. I think that's a valid point, that this is something that's very sensitive to the community, and having that, this, you know, detailed information available sooner would have been helpful. But I do know at the same time that we've been soliciting the input over a longer period of time, and we have our consultant in the area there where people are able to express comments and opinions. And so I'm going to trust that the recommendation that's in here reflects the wishes of the people in the neighborhood and assume that that's the best, the best thing for the neighborhood.
Rico?
Through the chair, I'm going to, on what council member Salazar said, maybe to city manager or city attorney, as far as the, it was properly put on the agenda, staff report wasn't available until this afternoon. So what does that or does that not do as far as meeting any requirements or obligations?
Well, in essence, this is an informational report. There were members of the public here, so they were obviously aware that it was going to be addressed and the topic was going to be addressed. It would certainly be within the discretion of the city council if you wanted to continue it, but there's no legal requirement that you do so. I would also point out that a number of the other actions that are going to be required for this will also come to the council in, in public session.
Hindsight's great. So we can go forward and, you know, we can try to have it more available. I know that, as council member Salazar said, we do have somebody that is up there in the neighborhood. I can speak for a lot of us who've been at many meetings and events, and yes, people have been interested at various times, at, at events that have been emotional, those that have been joyful. It's a delicate situation to, and I think we've all come to realize, it tore our heart out, and it's not going to be easy to put it back together, and we are not going to make everyone happy along the way. And I come to that, piece in my mind that knowing that we're going to have to do the best we can to get it back to where the best we remember it as and go forward. And I know that one of the concerns that were, were back when PG&E had five lots was, let's get it done. Let's move it forward. Let's bring our community and neighborhood back, and let's just not have empty lots next to my house. And I think this is an opportunity, though it's not going to please everybody, but it is moving the ball in the right direction and moving us forward as a community.
So would you like a motion or do you, do you have direction?
I, I think we've heard clear direction, but I would appreciate a motion and that makes it more.
Can I, can I ask one last question? If I, now, you've made it clear to the city manager that the, that PG&E is not prevented from, from selling these lots to individual, to individuals or anyone interested. Is that what you were getting at?
Technically, they're not prevented. I think PG&E, they are required by virtue of our settlement agreement at the minimum, I would say, to consult and to coordinate with the city. And I think that PG&E's actions are very much in, in the spirit and in compliance with that agreement. And so the fact that they have suggested to residents or to individuals that the city has a first right of refusal is, is maybe just a use of words that are not specifically articulated in our agreement. I think the, the intent to work together with the city and not step out and sell one or more individual lots would be, like I said, is entirely appropriate and consistent with our agreement.
I'm just envisioning, even though there's just one person that came forward saying that they're very interested, I envision that there's a whole slew of people out there who are very interested in that if PG&E were to be, you know, free to do this, that it would be a mess up there. And then there's no control, and who's to say, just because one property, you know, one potential property owner says they're ready to go, that nine others we'd have no control over? The city would have virtually, and the neighborhood would virtually have no control.
I am aware that there are other individuals who have expressed interest in purchasing lots, either from the city or from PG&E. By no means well-informed on any specific conversations or the number of conversations that PG&E might have had with individuals. But I think it's fair to say that there are multiple individuals who are likely interested in individually purchasing and developing lots in the neighborhood. And my guess is that there have been some number of conversations. There may be other purchase offers that have been provided to PG&E, I don't know. And that's why we, we did carefully consider that strategy as an alternative because we were aware that there is an interest, and, and I think council members have were aware that there is an interest and, and I think council members have articulated this well, that like many things that we've been forced to try and address in the best way we possibly can, it's, it's, it's not likely that the solution that we identify is, is having the best benefit for the community as a whole and for the neighborhood is, is likely to please everybody.
Yeah. Motion?
Motion? I move that we go forward with, sorry, I move that we go forward with doing an RFP proposal and speci, and enough specificity to include time, you know, time limits and all those things that we discussed earlier.
And that includes working with PG&E to collaborate to?
Yes.
To get it all done?
I'll second that.
Motion to second on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I just thought of one more thing. I'm, and I, just for the matter of the public record, these lots will eventually, these homes will eventually be sold to individuals who will hopefully occupy and live happily ever after in them. So we hope that people will pay attention to this process and that they will continue to be interested and that there will be a great opportunity down the road, we hope, for people who are interested to purchase a home and to participate in making this neighborhood spring back to life.
And I'm sure the city will do its due diligence to alert and let the community know when these?
Absolutely.
Matters are coming forward, when the time is right and when their opportunity for purchase is.
Absolutely.
Okay. Item number 12, comments from council members? Irene?
Thank you. I'd just like everyone to remember that April 22nd is the day, is Earth Day and it also is the day that San Mateo County will no longer be distributing, or the stores in San Mateo County will no longer be distributing plastic bags. And along with that, on May 4th is Operation Clean Sweep and if you come to the city park at 9:00 in the morning, we'll give you donuts and juice and coffee and send you out to go clean up part of the city and we will give you bags, reusable bags to take with you to the grocery store after that. So just like to remind everyone.
Okay. Rico?
Wanted to, I had a meeting with the city manager last week and just to go over some of the budget items that we, I had brought up because I rambled quite a list and so just to clarify, and it has been on my mind and going forward as the budget is just about here for us to embark upon another cycle, is that over the, I'd say last five years or so systematically, we have reduced services across the board in all departments. But it has been a concern and it made me realize it when I was at the police station and they were talking to some of the merchants on San Mateo Avenue, that if there's an opportunity or we find the flexibility to, shall we say, reinstate some services in areas, I, I think we should come up or develop a plan that we should look at and maybe even as a council meet prior to the study session, just to see if there's various opinions, we get all on the same page. Couple of things, and I've talked to the city manager, is in police, there was a crime prevention officer that when Mark Phillips retired, due to reductions, we had, that was, position was removed. Lately, it just seems that those type of things of being out there, being proactive, having somebody in the community to connect everything, I think is important. I worry about our community services department and we've obviously reduced staff in a lot of areas from senior services to recreation, to parks, to library services, and I think we're stretching some things thin. So I think these are some areas and I wanted to express them here so my colleagues knew that, and those were all expressed during the study session. And if that affords itself an opportunity, I'd like to see us maybe look at that or come up with a plan. So if again, there is flexibility or opportunity, that we look at those important services that this community has relied upon, expects, probably deserves, and that we get ourselves prepared for this next budget cycle.
Thank you. Ken?
Mr. Mayor, Bob Reichel made a comment and he's been a great asset to this community on Relay for Life and other things in this community. And I have to say, I'm, I'm very passionate also. And so I only have a couple more times I can speak about this. Relay for Life is about community and we can talk about budgets, we can talk about rebuilding communities and things, but this community comes together because we've all been touched with cancer. And four years in San Bruno with Relay for Life has, has grown and I couldn't be prouder of the residents, the volunteers, the business owners, the city staff. This is going to be something that our grandchildren are going to know about. And so I just want to alert everyone to be aware that it's not just about walking around the track. It's about raising funds, it's about saving lives. And I can talk on and on and on about this and I just want everyone to just take a minute and just say, okay, what can I do to support the community, you know, and support Relay for Life because we are saving lives. So April 27th, I'm going to ask that I have a little bit more time, a few days before the event, that our next meeting, but it's, it's something that's important for this community and, and important for each individual. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael, anything?
Well, everybody else said something.
No pressure.
Actually, I, I did just want to say our, our beloved city clerk, Carol Bonner, has missed a couple of meetings, she's been out sick, so I just wanted to say if she's out there watching us tonight, we miss you and hope you're feeling better.
And I was going to mention that we received numerous inquiries about Carol and she is doing much better. She should be back on the job hopefully within the next two to three weeks and thank you, Vicky, for refilling in full time. I know it's, it's a lot of work, but you're doing a great job. So with that, we will be going to closed session. Two items, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. One case, AT&amp;T versus City of San Bruno, San Mateo County Superior Court case 518268. And item 13B, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property parcels numbers are in the staff report. Agency negotiator is the city manager, negotiating parties, the city of San Bruno and the Bullis family and the Greg family, and they're under negotiation, the price and terms of payment. And having said that, we will adjourn to our next city council meeting to be held right here April 23rd. Meeting adjourned.[1796.19]